I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have with us Reverend Pam McCurdy from Bethany United Methodist Church, 760 Hurt Road. I'd like to call on Reverend McCurdy to come forward to give the invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please rise.
May all that is said and done in this meeting and by the City Council each day be pleasing to you and of benefit to all those who live and work in the Smyrna area. We thank you for the City Council members and staff and their willingness to be servant leaders. We pray that the Council will always seek your guidance to govern with wisdom and fairness. May they be willing to listen to information shared and concerns voiced with open hearts and open minds. We thank you for all of those individuals who service and work in various city departments help to make Smyrna a beautiful and safe place to live. We pray that they too will seek your guidance to perform their duties with wisdom and fairness. Gracious God, Smyrna is blessed with a beautifully diverse group of citizens. May they seek your guidance in finding ways to live together in harmony for the good of the whole community. May they seek your guidance in finding ways to work and support elected officials and city workers that promote the growth, health, and well-being of the whole community. God, please continue to watch over, protect, and pour out your grace and mercy on all here. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Bacon's not going to be with us tonight. He's still recovering from his health issues over the weekend. He'll be fine, but just not quite there yet. Agenda changes. We do have one under the mayoral report, item 3C, the mayor's assignment of council committees. We're going to wait until he's here. That's a role that he plays and sole assignment of those, so I need a motion to table this.
Mayor, I move to postpone consideration of item 3C to the next available meeting.
Have a second. All those in favor, please vote. Mr. Fennel, we need a vote to record the certified election results from the July 24th runoff election.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of 2018-336, which is the approval of the recording of the official city election results for the special election runoff for Ward 6 held July 24, 2018. The candidates in the runoff election on July 24, 2018 were Tim Gould with 603 total votes for 60.3% and Idella Moore with 397 total votes for 39.70%. There were 1,021 total votes cast in the Ward 6 runoff election, which was 18.9% of the registered voters, 5,416 in Ward 6. I move approval of the election results.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please vote. Item B is the swearing-in ceremony to complete the current term of Ward 6 council member seat for Tim Gould by Superior Court Judge Ann Harris. Judge Harris, you want to come on up? Yeah, Tim, bring whoever you want to up there with you.
Next to your wife.
We could either judge, Judge's got to come.
No, no, she's going to take a picture.
A real picture. Need somebody to hold.
Good?
Hold on, I'm waiting for this one.
Yes, please.
You got to try, get a hold of her.
Is he going to hold up?
He's going to hold it, yes. Yep.
Good?
Y'all ready?
Yeah.
Okay, if you will raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I'm lucky.
Okay.
Pass it to you, hold one second, please.
Ah, there you go. All right, on behalf of all my colleagues in Superior Court, I'm very happy to be here swearing you in, Mr. Gould, and I actually live in your ward, so it's particularly special for me. So with your right hand raised, if you will repeat after me, I, Tim Gould...
I, Tim Gould.
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will well and truly conduct myself...
That I will well and truly conduct myself.
...as council member of the City of Smyrna...
As council member of the City of Smyrna.
...for the ensuing term...
For the ensuing term.
...that I will faithfully enforce the charter...
That I will faithfully enforce the charter.
...and ordinances of the City of Smyrna...
And ordinances of the City of Smyrna.
...to the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
...without fear or favor...
Without fear or favor.
...that I am not the holder of any unaccounted public money...
I am not the holder of any unaccounted public money.
...due to state or any political subdivision...
Due to the state or any political subdivision.
...or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
...and in all my actions as council member...
And in all my actions as a council member.
...act as I believe for the best interests...
Act as I believe for the best interest...
...of the City of Smyrna.
Of the City of Smyrna.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And congratulations to all your family that I know... Congratulations to all your family.
Thank you.
I know they worked very hard for you, and I know you will work very hard for the City of Smyrna. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the support here, too. Thank you.
A lot of great supporters, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. And then we need to give this sound.
All right, everyone look this way, please. One, two, three. Just in case Tim blinks, one more. One, two, three.
Got it. Thank you.
All right, and you know what? We need to sign it. I don't think they need a notary, right? No. I think since we're doing it in open court, it works, so...
Isn't all that how that is?
Thank you so much. Do we give this to you? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I was very honored. It was a pleasure. It's always a treat for me.
Glad to have you. We were meeting upstairs. We had somebody make sure to keep eyes on him to make sure he was actually going to make it down here and do this.
The doors were blocked.
Item four, land issues, zonings, annexations. We have one item, item 4A. Ms. Aldo Jones, would you please read the background?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Good afternoon, everyone. PM Builders LLC is seeking to rezone 0.38 acres at 1478 Spring Street from R15 to RAD conditional for the development of two new single-family homes at a density of 5.2 units per acre. The zoning request was heard by the Planning and Zoning Board at the June 11, 2018 meeting and was denied by a vote of six to one. Community Development recommends approval of the proposed rezoning for 1478 Spring Street with conditions, and I'd like to call Rusty Martin, our senior planner, to give you more background.
This is a public hearings. Anyone wanting to speak in opposition or who wants to make public comment on this item will need to come forward and be sworn in, and they will have to call on you to speak at the appropriate time. So if you want to say something, if you even think you want to say something, you want to come forward and get sworn in. I'll turn it over to her, and I'm guessing you'll turn it over to Rusty.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Rusty?
All right.
Take it away.
No problem. This zoning request went before the PNZ Board on June 11. They recommended denial by a vote of six to one. You guys will obviously hear it tonight again and make a final recommendation or a final decision. The subject property is 1478 Spring Street. It's at the southeast corner of Foster Street and Spring Street. The subject property is zoned R15. The applicant's proposing to rezone the property to RAD conditional for the development of two single-family lots. Currently, the site sits vacant. There's no building or structure on the site. It's a nice grass site. And if you look at this zoning map, you can see everything to the west, south, and east is zoned R15. The property across Spring Street to the north has an RAD zoning designation. This is the future land use map for the city. The future land use map designates this property as mixed-use, so the zoning proposed for the property will not warrant a land use change for this site. It'll remain mixed-use. As you can see on the future land use map, the properties to the west and south have a mixed-use, future land use designation, and the properties to the north and east have a moderate-density residential land use designation, which is up to, is up to 4.5 units per acre. It's a residential land use designation. Here's the proposed site plan. The applicant is proposing to split this lot into two lots. The home closest to Spring Street will front on Spring Street with a side-entry driveway off of Foster Street, and the lot to the south will have a home that fronts on Foster Street with a front-entry drive off of Foster. With this request, they're proposing the following minimum setbacks: a front setback of 20 feet, a side setback of five, and a rear setback of five. And those are requested variances that we'll discuss in a second. With this request, we'd require a five-foot right-of-way dedication. In addition, there are five variances associated with this, first being a lot size reduction from 15,000 down to 6,800 square feet. Staff is supportive of that request. The next one is a lot width reduction from 100 feet to 70 feet. Staff is supportive of that. And the next one is a front setback reduction from 35 feet down to 20 feet. Staff is supportive. And the next one is a side setback reduction from 10 feet to five. Staff is not supportive of that request, and in our recommendation, we outline what we believe those side setbacks should be. And finally, the rear setback reduction from 30 feet to five feet. Staff is not supportive of that request, and we also make another recommendation for a little bit larger setback. These are the plans that were presented by the applicant, and this is typical, the type of homes he plans to build on-site. Pictures of the subject property, and then adjoining properties to give you some context. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning of the subject property from R15 RAD conditional with following conditions: standard conditions from 1201 of the zoning ordinance dealing with the composition of the home, stormwater management, underground utilities, traffic improvements, streetlights, and then landscaping requirements are all part of those conditions. And in addition to the standard conditions, we're proposing special conditions. Special condition number 11 lays out the minimum setbacks for the site, and this is where we deviate from the applicant on this request. The front setback should be 20 feet, the side setback should be 10 feet, and that's on either side of the home, and at the rear of the house, it should be 20 feet. And if you remember, his requests were to have those set at five feet apiece. 12 establishes the minimum lot size of 6,800 square feet. 13 requires a minimum floor area of 1,800 square feet per home. 14 establishes a minimum driveway length of 22 feet. And 15 includes a right-of-way dedication. 16 requires a sidewalk, a five-foot sidewalk and two-foot grass buffer along Foster Street. 17 requires any sanitary and sewer improvements deemed necessary by the Public Works Director, be it the responsibility of the developer. 18 requires the replacement and upgrade of the drainage pipe on the eastern property line, and that's at the direction of the Public Works Director. 19, the developer should provide new curb and gutter along Foster Street for the length of the development. 20, the developer should provide curb and radius improvements at the intersection of Spring Street and Foster Street. 21, any trees that are proposed to be saved must have proper tree protection. If they're not, then they need to be removed. 22, the home that fronts on, the lot that fronts on Spring Street should have a home that also fronts on Spring Street and not on Foster. 23 ties the approval of the zoning to the site plan submitted, and 24 ties the zoning to the elevation submitted. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Any questions for Rusty?
I do.
Mayor Protem, can I, I just want to put it on the record. Y'all are aware of this, but I want to publicly underscore. There's two different recommendations this time. Rusty started off by saying the planning commission denied it, but he ended up by saying the staff recommended approval. I don't want anybody, one doesn't, we present both recommendations, so I just wanted to make sure everybody understood. That's why it may have looked a little confusing, it's really not. We present both to you, but the planning commission recommended denial.
Thank you. Ms. Blackburn?
Yes. Rusty, or Ken, my question to you is when we're looking at this, it is now considered mixed-use, future land use is mixed-use. So when we're going from the 4.5 homes per acre to now 5.2, is that something that's falling within what we are, what this is now? It's a multi-use plan now? Am I understanding that correct?
The city's comprehensive plan and future land use map don't establish a density limit for the mixed-use zoning classification or for the mixed-use, future land use designation. However, we do have a mixed-use zoning classification that establishes minimum lot size for single-family homes at 6,200 square feet, so we use that to make our determination as to whether or not this would fit within that land use designation.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions for Rusty? Is the applicant here? Come forward, please.
Can I move this? Yeah. And if you just want to move forward, you can move, hit that, and it'll take you through. Okay. Give these to her.
My name's Brad Thompson with offices at 1,000 Johnson Ferry Road, and the request you have before you tonight, I really want to focus on your professional staff's recommendation. Let's just forget about the planning commission and what they decided. But I'm requesting two lots to the corner of Spring Street and Foster Street. For those of you that are familiar with this area, it is an area that has not really enjoyed the resurgence that many areas of Williams Park has and is currently in need of a facelift, to be very honest. So the reason I'm asking for two lots versus one is very simple. Being that it is an area that is in close proximity to the railroad tracks and the industrial uses that are closer to the railroad tracks, I view that as a negative. And while I think that, you know, certainly Williams Park is a great place to live, and it's, the reason I try to build homes in Williams Park is because it's a great place to live, very accessible to Market Village and anywhere else that you might want to walk to. But what I see there is a market, or an area rather, that is much more amenable to the sale of homes in the high fours and fives, not in the sevens. And so what I'm trying to do there is to create a foothold, is what it essentially is, to potentially be able to move down the street and build homes as each home gets sold. Now, it is widely known, I think, by most everybody, I own an additional, two lots in addition to this one lot that I'm requesting a rezoning for. And for the time, for the moment, I'm, I have actually torn one of those houses down, and I'm waiting to kind of see what happens with this to decide what to do with that next house. It is my intention at some point to build houses right down the street. I would love to build the entire street. I do not currently own the final or the last three lots on Foster Street. I have tried to purchase a couple of them, and at this point, to no avail, but I will continue. The issue here is density, and Rusty correctly pointed out that under a moderate-density residential land use designation, the maximum is 4.5 and has been for years. This is not moderate-density land use designation. It was at one time, but the city about two years ago, two and a half years ago commissioned a consultant to study the living trends, I guess, in Smyrna and kind of try to determine, what do we want to be? And I say "we," I don't live here, but I do build in this community and have for a number of years. But what does Smyrna want to be in the next 10 or 15 years? There was two years of meetings, two years of citizen input. Many of those meetings I attended myself. And at the end of those meetings, one of the things that came out of it was redesignating this area as mixed-use, and rightfully so, I believe. Again, with its proximity to railroad tracks and to the industrial uses that are down there, makes sense. It's a buffer to the moderate-density residential it is on the north side of Spring Street. So, again, going back to density being really the issue here, 4.5 doesn't really apply. Now, you may hear that this is not the appropriate zoning for a mixed-use residential or mixed-use, excuse me, mixed-use land use area. Well, there are a number of uses that are allowed under mixed-use. I have to read these because there's so many, but I'm just going to read a few of them. But daycare, nursing homes, banks, clinics, laundries, beauty shops, coffee shops, retail establishments, the list is really extensive. But it also allows for single-family detached homes. And as Rusty alluded to, the minimum lot size is, under the mixed-use category, is 6,200 square feet. I'm at, I can't remember what my minimum is, but I'm over 7,000, I know that. So a 6,200-square-foot density would probably be in the neighborhood of six units per acre, six and a half units per acre, I don't know, somewhere in that neighborhood. I'm well below that. I'm only slightly above the 4.5. So what I'm asking for is the opportunity to build homes where this much of the buying population can afford it versus this much of the buying population. We have a bit of an affordability crisis, and I'm not talking about just Smyrna, I'm talking about in this country. Building materials, labor has gone up, of course, we know land has gone up, and so we have an affordability crisis. That's why so many of the millennial generation is renting and not buying because they can't afford, with their student loans, to go out and buy homes. When we decide in this market that, or in this area, that we're not going to allow more dense uses, then basically what we're saying is to this much of the population, of the home-buying population, you can't live here. And I just don't think that's right. I have enjoyed, we've all enjoyed, a very diverse pop- I have enjoyed, we've all enjoyed, a very diverse population here in Smyrna. And the higher the price point, the less diverse that population becomes. And one of the things, one of the questions I would ask you to just ask yourself, you can build a $750,000 home, you can build a $500,000 home. Who do you think is more likely to engage in the community? Is it that $750,000 buyer? Are they likely to send their kids to local schools? Or are they going to choose maybe to send them to a private school? Where a $500,000 buyer is much more likely to engage in the school system and send their kids where they can be involved in the PTA, and their kids will attend those schools, and they'll make, they will foster change, which we still fight the school question. That's still an issue here in this particular area. So those are the questions I think we need to be asking ourselves. We went through two years of study of citizen input. This is what came out, and now what we're saying is, well, no, we don't want to do that. We don't want change. Well, I have, I've handed out to you twenty-seven names, and frankly, if I'd had just more opportunity to work this, and not time, but just the time to go around door-to-door, I probably could have doubled the size of the names on this list. These are all folks that I had at a gathering about three weeks ago, many of whom Council Woman Blackburn has met, who are not here this evening mostly because they have young children, and they're going at a hundred miles an hour, and they don't have time to attend meetings like this. But they are in support of what I'm trying to do over there on Foster Street. Many of these people don't live in $600,000 homes. Some of these folks live in $200,000 homes. So this is a whole segment of this home-buying population. This is who I'm directing my comments to and about. These are the folks, these folks are the future of Smyrna. These are the folks that are going to grow up here, I mean, they're going to raise their kids here, they're going to go to school here, and they're going to get involved, and they're going to make positive change for the community. So these are the folks I'm trying to reach, and these are the folks, now even at four or $500,000, there's still a segment of the population you're not going to be able to reach. This is not workforce housing I'm talking about. Unfortunately, workforce housing is nearly impossible to do without some other programs that are available through public-private partnerships. There's just no way to get to workforce housing in these areas that I see. But what I hope that you guys will consider this evening is that, you know, density is not the problem. If you're developing and building quality residential communities, I've done some things in other communities that well exceed four and a half units to the acre, well exceed five point two. I've done things in the six and a half to seven range. Belmont Commons is well over that. Now, you may or may not like Belmont Commons, but it served a niche in terms of price point that has not been well-served in the city core. So as we look at this tonight, I ask that you give stronger consideration to your professional staff, who know what they're doing, know their business, and have recommended approval for this. And I respectfully request that you would look at their recommendation and approve this request tonight, and I'll thank you for that and reserve the rest of my time for questions.
Any questions of the applicant?
Hi. Thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it. And could you please talk more about how you handled the stormwater runoff in the two lots and in terms of the...
Well, typically what we've done on smaller developments like this is we do bioretention, which is essentially a rain garden. I don't know if either one of those things mean anything to you, but essentially what you're doing is you're digging a hole in the ground and providing enough depth and storage capacity, excuse me, so that you can have water quality as well as retain water so that it releases over time. And that's done on a lot-by-lot basis is typically what that's done, or how that's done.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
What's the price range of the homes again?
I expect these to be, there's two homes. We're talking about one that faces on Spring Street and one that faces on Foster Street. I expect the one on Foster Street being the less desirable of the two lots, to be probably in the four fifty to four seventy-five range. I'd like to try to keep it around four fifty if I can. The one that actually fronts on Spring Street, I think, will be in the mid-fives.
So rather than choose one or the other mixed-use options, you've chosen to invite two families to live on this street by the construction of these two homes?
Yeah. If you saw the map, you can see that I'm on the very northern boundary line of the mixed-use land designation, land use designation. I think this makes a lot of sense as a step down for what potentially may happen down closer to the railroad tracks. And I don't know what that'll be. I don't know if I'll be alive to see it, and I don't know that I'll ever even have any part of it. Not that I wouldn't like to. But yes, I mean, as the northern boundary, I think it makes complete sense to have a five point two density south of Spring Street, and then, of course, as you hit north, it goes to four point five because it's a different land use designation.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to ask anyone else who wants to speak to come forward. Please state your name, spell your last name, state your address, and for the official records, and what comments you have to make.
Mayor Protem and council members, my name is Leanne Fai, last name F as in Frank, EY. And I have lived at 1496 Spring Street for twenty years, and I respectfully request that you deny this rezoning petition. I don't usually speak at council meetings, but I wanted to speak tonight because I believe that your decision will set a very important zoning precedent for Williams Park. The property we are discussing is located seventy-five feet from my property at the end of my block. The only reason we're all discussing this petition is that at some point in the last year or so, unbeknownst to anyone in Williams Park, someone moved a pink box, a block and a third on the future land use map. A mixed-use future land use designation was moved onto my residential block. I'm sorry, but I don't want mixed use at the end of my block. And thank goodness, this rezoning request isn't for mixed use. It's a residential rezoning request from R-15 to RAD conditional. So we've got a property that's zoned residential and has a future land use designation of mixed use. Apparently, the petitioner wants to use the mixed-use future land use designation as a loophole to increase the density of the property and sidestep the moderate-density residential designation that our neighborhood has worked so long and so hard to get and to maintain. For the past fifteen years, residents of Williams Park have been up here fighting to maintain the character of our neighborhood and guide reasonable development. We were proactive in working with the city several years ago to develop a moderate-density residential district in our neighborhood, which is up to four point five houses per acre. We all knew growth was coming to our neighborhood, and we wanted to appropriately manage expectations about that development. Density and lot size are major concerns for the neighborhood. And your decision here tonight will make a significant impact on Williams Park. Because that pink box got moved, there's now over ten acres of newly-minted future mixed-use property in Williams Park. Allowing the use of mixed-use criteria for residential rezoning means one extra house on this lot. But mixed use has a single-family residential density of up to six point nine houses per acre. And over the ten acres, that's an extra twenty-four houses in our neighborhood. That's a lot of extra houses. Please make a clear statement that residential criteria, in our case, moderate-density criteria, will be used for residential rezoning in our neighborhood. Please deny this petition. Thank you.
I'm Casey Clavin, C-L-A-V-I-N. I live on Roswell Street. You should each have a package of graphics in front of you, which illustrates the points I'll be making, and in the interest of time, I'll read rather than speak from memory. Smyrna's oldest residential neighborhood, Williams Park, was a good place to live in the early nineteen hundreds. But as Smyrna expanded westward in the nineteen sixties, it became the wrong side of the tracks, and some properties transitioned to commercial uses. By the nineteen nineties, its residential appeal rebounded, and in the early two thousands, it became a desirable place to live again. With that, commercial use declined. On page one of my presentation, the blue areas represent commercial properties which have been rezoned for residential use. These points, along with Smyrna's zoning review factor number five, have a strong bearing on the subject application. That factor asks, is the zoning proposal in conformity with the land use plan? In this case, the answer's a bit complicated. In the city's document package for this application, there are two places where the subject property is depicted on a map. Those are both reproduced upper-left on my page two. On the first page of the Community Development Department's memorandum, the subject property is shown within the R-15 residential zoning colored yellow. Later, on Exhibit B, the subject property is shown within a purple mixed-use area at a boundary with the overall areas prevailing moderate-density land use. Only in relationship to this zoning application did it come to the attention of our neighborhood, that the small mixed-use area grew in size on the city's new land use plan, as shown in the bottom graphic on my page two. We believe this represents either a drafting error or an ill-conceived decision, because commercial land use has been declining here in recent years. While commercial properties have been rezoned for residential use, no property has gone from residential to commercial. This very application is evidence of the prevailing use. The applicant wishes to build only houses, not a mixed-use development. So while the property may technically lie in a mixed-use area, it's more accurately viewed as part of the moderate-density residential environment by which it's surrounded. Smyrna's zoning review factor one asks, does the proposed, does the proposal permit a use that's suitable in view of the use and development of adjacent nearby property? The answer's no, because the proposed density is significantly higher than the uses surrounding it, as shown on page three of my presentation. Overall residential development, the area A, shown in yellow, is three point five houses to the acre. The city's target for new development here is from three to four point five houses per acre. The green area marked B between Foster and Elizabeth Streets, which includes the subject property, stands currently at four point five houses to the acre. The pink area marked C was recently redeveloped just across Spring Street at three point nine houses to the acre. The light blue development marked D east of Elizabeth Street is built at two point eight houses per acre. And the blue area marked E across Foster Street from the subject is a ten-acre tract occupied by a Baptist church. Clearly then, five point two units per acre is out of scale with the surrounding areas. Review factor three asks, does the subject property have a reasonable economic use as currently zoned? And the answer here is yes. The current R-15 zoning allows the construction of one house, and since the applicant acquired the property for a very low price, he can make a good profit building just one house here. Review factor six asks, are there existing or changing conditions which support either approval or disapproval of the zoning proposal? Changing conditions here support disapproval. The church property across Foster Street from the subject property was designated moderate-density until the new land use map changed it to mixed use. But mixed use is unlikely to be here because commercial uses are in decline while residential development is very active. This church has a diminishing congregation, and several residential builders are keen to acquire its acreage. If approved, this application will later serve as a precedent for redeveloping the church property at a density greater than is appropriate in Williams Park. Review factor seven, will the proposed development conform to, be a detriment to, or enhance the architectural standards, open space requirements, and aesthetics of the general neighborhood considering the current and historic planned uses in the area? The proposed development would have detrimental effect on the aesthetics and open spaces of the neighborhood, both in terms of its current nature and its historical past. Williams Park is historically built on half-acre and larger lots. Recognizing changing development trends, neighbors worked with the city a few years back to develop a strategy allowing increased density for new development while preserving the nature of the place as a whole. The result of the, was the creation of the moderate-density land use designation, with a cap at four point five houses to the acre. In view of that commitment, we're very disappointed with staff's recommendation to approve this application. We ask this council to affirm the Planning and Zoning Commission's more appropriate assessment that the project should not go forward. Thank you for your time. Please deny this application.
My name's Matt Bennett. I live next door to this property, and Bennett's B-E-N-N-E-T-T. And I just had a couple of points. As far as I know, according to this staff report, the applicant has not provided any information with regards to stormwater management for the site. So as far as that goes, I don't know where the water's going to go. There's nothing that's going to tell me that. So I have no idea how much water's going to be coming off that site onto my property. So, you know, from the outset, I don't support the rezoning. And then, in regards to Brad talking about a professional staff, well, I'm assuming the professional staff came up with a minimum lot size, a minimum lot width, a minimum front setback, a minimum side setback, and a minimum rear setback. Well, this application is asking variances for all of the above. He's asking a variance on the minimum lot size, a variance on the minimum lot width, a variance on the minimum front setback, a variance on the minimum side setback, and a variance on the minimum rear setback. So these are minimums. Minimums. So why are we having variances on five minimums? So what's the point of having minimums if you're not going to follow those at all? And then, as far as the rezoning, and Leanne touched on this, I don't understand where mixed use comes into this. That seems to me like a red herring. The application is from R-15 to RAD. It doesn't say anything about mixed use. So if he wanted to apply for mixed use, I'm assuming he could have done that. So I don't, I don't understand that. I think that's just thrown out to try and get the minimum lot size reduced. So anyway, I hope you deny it, and that's all I got.
A question. Can you tell me again exactly where you live? In relation...
I live immediately south of the property, adjacent to it.
Immediately south?
1486.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm on Spring Street, 1486 Spring Street. The old greenhouse with a screen porch.
He lives immediately to the east.
Thank you. My name is Lenny Ward. I live at 1496 Spring Street. And if I had $10 for every time I came here and argued that the use of RAD conditional to reduce lot sizes was the wrong policy, I could have bought this piece of property. However, we're not here about that. I'm here to talk about this policy in general. If memory serves, y'all rejected the rezoning of the apartment property because it was not mixed use. It was a single use. This is a single use. And this is also, I can talk about the policy here in your own comprehensive land use plan just as easily as Mr. Thompson. But let me give you one of the most important ones. The 2040 Land Use Plan talks about, like many communities in proximity to I-285, infill housing and major renovations and flipping of houses within the city's single-family neighborhoods is a reality. The level of priority that the community desires to put on community character should be further explored to understand if the city's current ordinances sufficiently address community preference for those infill housing situations. That's the 2040 recent comprehensive plan. That's what we're here to talk about, and that's an important consideration, because the comp plan also talks about throughout, in the 2030 comp plan, throughout the planning process, shareholders who are familiar and regularly use the zoning ordinances pointed out the need to revise and update the provisions for the RAD district. It had been recommended that the district be split into more than one category to more closely align the residential densities depicted on the 2040 Future Land Use Map and be renamed to avoid confusion. Again, this use of this, of the RAD condition, this is below RAD conditional's minimum. If we're rezoning from R-15 to RAD conditional, let's be consistent with the RAD condition, which is a minimum of seventy-two sixty, not sixty-eight hundred. The 2040 Land Use Plan also says, the city offers a planned development option that permits residential development as a part of the comprehensive plan when certain conditions are met, such as appropriate underlying zoning and minimum development. are met, such as appropriate underlying zoning and minimum development track size. Here you have a minimum development track size which is small. Now, I don't live on a big lot, but my house has been there since 1894. And you can build one-for-one on every single one of those houses on Foster Street without any problem whatsoever. And you can build a great house fronting on Spring Street without any problem whatsoever. But why do we need to crowd one, to crowd an extra house in other than for profit? Generally, the conditions here, when we're imposed for the police power, are, should be for the benefit of the community. Conditional zoning is about protection, not about avoidance. And that's what this conditional zoning asks for. It asks to avoid the conditions. Any inconvenient part of the zoning code, we're just going to use RAD conditional, and we'll get, as Matt pointed out, we'll get those five variances. But your own code says you should be avoided unless unusual circumstances make these limitations in the ordinance impractical. There's nothing here that makes these limitations impractical. One of the most important things for us is that this, I can argue each and every one, just like Casey did, of the factors that you consider in your, in your, when, when the staff considers it. And I can't understand how the staff arrived at their conclusion when the 2040 Land Use Plan said residential uses occupy a majority of the land area within the city. These residential areas compose a large variety of neighborhoods and subdivisions, each with their own character, unified by strong neighborhood or community organizations. One of the things that we want to avoid here is the crowding in, because if you allow this rezoning, like to, to build this particular lot, it's going to show up every single rezoning that comes along. Foster Street's dead end. Elizabeth Street is, was had to cut through. Alexander Street's a dead end. We sent, the infrastructure simply can't handle this kind of density. The city council is providing guidance as to whether or not the intent of the 2040 comp plan is to allow mixed-use density to be allowed when residential rezonings are requested. So if you allow this, what you'll end up with is mixed-use density and no mixed-use, and you'll have density in residential neighborhoods which is higher than the density in those surrounding neighborhoods. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Anybody else want to come forward to speak? This concludes the public hearing. This is in Ms. Maryline Blackburn's ward. I'll turn it over to you.
Well, I really appreciate each and every one of you coming out tonight and sharing your thoughts as, as it relates to Williams Park. And I love Williams Park. It's a very quaint area, and I do realize that, you know, there's, there's a certain expectation that you have there, and you're looking to the city, you're looking to each one of your council members here for guidance as well. And I also understand the other flip side of that coin with Brad Thompson here and trying to create more of a diverse housing option for Williams Park for those individuals that may not be able to afford the $600,000 and $700,000 homes. It's a, a difficult position to be in at this time, and I've spoken with each and every one of you. And although we realize that Smyrna is growing at a very rapid rate, we also want to understand that we want to be a welcoming community for those individuals who are looking here, looking to move here to buy more housing that is somewhat affordable for them. So if no one else has anything that they want to say, Mr. Fennel?
Any other comments?
No? Okay. At this point, I am going to make a motion to approve the
Second.
2018-163 zoning request for Z-18-007 rezoning from R-15 to RAD conditional for two single-family homes to the density of 5.2 units per acre, 0.38 acres landlot 5591478 Spring Street, Pan Builders LLC.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please vote.
Right number one house. Amazing. It's a tie vote. This is a tie vote, three to three, which means that I'm in the hot seat. I'm going to vote to approve this, and so it passes. Move on to the next item. Item five is privileged licenses. Oh, just see, we have none. Item six is formal business. Item 6A, 2018-304 adoption of the 2018 millage rate of 8.99 mils. Ms. Adler Jones, would you please read the background?
The fiscal year 2019 budget was approved by city council, and it included revenue projections based on 8.99 mils. This is the formal adoption of the 8.99 millage rate. The official notice and all required information was posted in the Marietta Daily Journal newspaper on July the 11th and July 18th. Required public hearings were held on July 18th at 10 o'clock a.m., and on July 18th at 6 p.m., and on July 25th at 10 a.m. Staff does recommend approval.
Any questions? Fennel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the 12th consecutive year maintaining the same millage rate. We're very proud of the fact that we haven't raised taxes in 12 years. We have maintained, going into our fifth year, our AAA bond rating so that our credit is good. We're keeping our millage flat, and we have been contained within the budget. I move approval of the adoption of the 2018 millage rate at 8.99 mils.
We have a second? We have a motion and a second? All those in favor, please vote. Item B, under formal business, 2018-343, approve non-exclusive access easement in favor of Frances J. Cribs and her successors in title across the entranceway into North Cooper Lake Park in order to allow access limited to a single curb cut to 4281 Nolan Drive.
Mr. Mayor, this is a simple curb cut allowing access to a piece of property along a private drive that is near the North Cooper Lake Park. I move approval of 2018-343, approve the non-exclusive access easement in favor of Frances J. Cribs and her successors in title across the entranceway into North Cooper Lake Park in order to allow access limited to a single curb cut to 4281 Nolan Drive.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor, please vote. It's approved 6-0. Item seven, commercial building permits, there are none. Item eight is the consent agenda. Ms. Adler Jones, would you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item A, approval of the July 16th, 2018 mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the July 16th, 2018 pre-council meeting minutes. Item C, approval of the June 28th, 2018 committee of the whole meeting minutes. Item D, approval of the July 12th, 2018 committee of the whole meeting minutes. Item E, award RFP 18-021 for annual financial audit services to the low bidder Nichols, Colley, and Associates LLC in the amount of $28,000 per year, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item E, award the four-year lease of turf maintenance equipment for $35,331.12 per year on Georgia State contract pricing from Jerry Paye Turf and Irrigation, 5350 Tulane Drive, Atlanta, Georgia 30336, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item G, approve the replacement of radios that control the 10 severe weather outdoor warning sirens, Phase II SPOST funded expenditure, in the amount of $58,970 from Allcom Wireless Incorporated, 1508 Noble Street, Anniston, Alabama. Item H, approval to revisions to personnel policy EMP 3-0, recruitment and selection, and authorize the mayor to execute related documents. Item I, approval of the 2018 STAR 94.1 Wolfstock downtown event area definition, street closings to include the Market Village entrance, West Spring Street in front of City Hall, Bank Street from King Street to the private residents, including entrances, entrances on Bank Street to close the circle in front of the library and the community center, including connecting streets, and special request for approved festival on Saturday, September 29th and Sunday, September 30th, 2018.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor, please vote. It's approved 6-0. Item nine is committee reports. I'd like to start with the birthday boy, Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thanks for the reminder of that. Mr. Mayor, I just want to note that Smyrna Little League, I think it's 11 and under, the team that has surpassed all other Smyrna Little League accomplishments in the past. They won the Southeast Regional Competition in North Carolina. We will have them in this room in two weeks to accept a proclamation on behalf of a grateful city for the work well done by the young men and the, and the staff and the families who actually supported consistently this group. And I want to thank them publicly for all the work they did. And also want to, by virtue of our adoption of the millage rate tonight completes the loop for our finance committee's work for the year, we've passed the budget. We now pass the millage rate. I want to thank the staff, the administration, and their team, and the members of council who helped us through the budget process. And I'm just proud to live, work, and be a part of a city that has such a robust fiscal health. And I thank the rest of the team for helping us to get there.
Mr. Tim Gould.
Want to thank you, Mayor, city council, and staff for making my transition as, as easy as possible, welcoming, welcoming me to the, to the council. And I look forward to serving the citizens and doing my part here in the council. Thank you.
Susan Wilkinson.
Thank you. Yes, I received an email from Mary Moore, the director of the library today, and she wanted me to give some library news. Smyrna Library wrapped up their annual summer reading program last month. Pre-K readers logged over 4,000 books read, and school-age kids logged 2,500 hours of reading over the eight-week period. Over 1,200 books were given away over the summer as prizes for logging reading time. The library also would like to recognize the Friends of the Smyrna Library for underwriting all those reading incentive prizes. Also, the fall classes and events are underway. The library's fall program starts this week. The Lego Club is tomorrow, August the 7th at 4 p.m. The Book Club also meets tomorrow at 7 p.m. to discuss Stones From the River by Usula Egai? I think, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that right. And then the storytime starts back up on Wednesday and Thursday of this week. These and many more events are posted on the library's online calendar of events. You can also pick up a printed storytime schedule at the youth services desk in the library, and you can sign up for the library's e-newsletter, which keeps you up to date on everything going on at the library. The next time you are in the library, ask a staff member to help you sign up. I also want to just mention the Smyrna's birthday celebration on, on Saturday night. It was a wonderful event, and for those that attended, the staff did a really great job, and I also want to thank them for all their hard work and making that a successful event, even though it did come up a rainstorm. It seems like everybody held, most people held out and didn't leave and, through the rain, and stayed, and the, the concert went on, and the fireworks were wonderful. I also want to thank Tim Gould, who our council. I'm looking forward to working with him, and I'm excited to have a new person here on our council. And with that, I yield.
Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, sir. I, I just want to welcome Tim as well. I think he's going to do a great job for us, and y'all can light up his phone now. On another note, also, thank everybody for coming out to the birthday celebration on Saturday evening. I know we had a little rain delay in there, but seemed like a good event, and happy to see everybody come out. With that, Mr. Mayor, you.
Maryline Blackburn.
Yes, I would like to, first of all, say congratulations to our Smyrna Little League team. They were adorable on Saturday when they came to the Smyrna birthday celebration, and they had such a great time. Thank you, Councilmember Fennel, for sharing your table with them. That was really great. We're, we're excited for them and ready for their next season. And also, secondly, just want to say welcome to our new council member, Tim Gould. It's going to be exciting to work with you. Already you see that we're a real diverse group up here, so get ready for the fun. And then also want to say, talk on Saturday night, as you know, our Smyrna birthday celebration was absolutely wonderful. It was grand. The bands were, were great. The Mustangs started it off, and then we had Banks and Chain. But my highlight for the night was the fireworks. I really think that Smyrna outdid themselves on Saturday evening. So it was, it was truly grand, and as Councilwoman Wilkinson said, the staff did a phenomenal job in pulling it all together and make sure that we had a great time in spite of the weather. I think, you guys probably saw me, I looked like a little wet rat, you know, rat, wet rat, just drenched, but it was all good. It was worth it. And, and then just want to say hello to my Smyrna, my Ward 3 residents, who came out to support me again today and working with me on trying to get Smyrna to be more sustainable, a sustainable Smyrna. I always ask the question, what do you think a sustainable Smyrna looks like? So with that, Mayor Protim, I yield.
Sandra Bluestein.
Thank you. If you saw yesterday's Marietta Daily Journal, you saw Princess here looking up, looking down at her arm, and then all of a sudden, all the rain started. But we had, we had a memorable 10 minutes or so, but after that, people had all kinds of things going on. They were hiding under their tables, you name it. Some just didn't move. But it made the evening a lot cooler than what it was before the rain started, so that was a blessing. And I do want to say thank you very much to the staff for all the time and effort that they put into this. And Maryline is right, those fireworks, we could compete with anybody who does fireworks. They were excellent, absolutely excellent. And Tim Gould, welcome to our little gathering here. Hopefully, he'll stay on for a while. And with that, I yield.
Ms. Adler Jones, anything?
I just want to say welcome to our new council member as well, and he and I have already started talking, and we're going to be doing some council orientations with our various departments, and the staff and I look forward to working with you. So congratulations.
Mr. Andrews?
Welcome, Tim, and happy birthday, Ron. That's all.
Mr. Cockman?
Same to both of you guys.
Graham?
I'd just like to say, I'd just like to say welcome, Tim, and welcome, and happy birthday, Ron. Thank you.
I'll echo what everybody said. I'm glad to have you onboard. And I also want to say a special thank you for the, for the public safety personnel at our big event on Saturday. You may not have seen them, but they were there making sure that everything, that we were all protected, so thank you very much. Item 10 is show cost hearings. We have none. Item 11 is citizen input. We have four signed up. Number, the first one is Alec Bakri, 3459 Shawnee Trail. His topic is comments.
My first comment tonight is this last election in Ward 6. It was excellent to show the 19% in the runoff, but it was 25% that five candidates had to share, which I find pathetic, especially when you had it on a ballot with other candidates from the state. We had, the council has a year and three months to try and break down this apathy where we only get 20, 25% in all our elections, whether it's Ward or the mayor's or council, all council seats. This is a sad scenario, and I hope you can find some way to motivate the people to get involved in government issues, which leads into my second comment. I noticed in the second meeting in June that in citizens' input, you had an excellent feedback from the council to the people that spoke. I thought of myself in 15 years of coming before you, not one word was ever mentioned in any of my speeches of comments on topics. I find this to be discriminatory, and I find it to be a double standard. And my, my point on this current one is term limits. I was proud to vote for Duncan for lieutenant governor. One of his issues was term limits. I've spoke more than once in front of you to ask you to, it only cost $1,000 to put it on the ballot, and this is a way of involving the people in decision-making in this city. We haven't had a referendum since the Bronner property in the 90s. What is the difficulty to put it on the ballot to get people encouraged to have input? Because people I talked to feel the council does what they want, not what we want. And I remind them, we're the employer, you are the employees, so you should be doing what the people want. And I've had a lot of people in favor of wanting to vote one way or the other. Again, Marietta did it, and I applaud them. But unfortunately, Smyrna's way back behind Marietta when it comes to open government. And I, and I'd like to hear from somebody in front of me, since I spoke for the third time on this, what you come up with for a decision, because I've heard nothing from anybody calling me at home or any other thing to put it on the ballot for this current, for this next midterm. Thank you. And I'm waiting for somebody to speak to me on this, because this is, I feel, a very important issue that can easily be accomplished. Again, it's only $1,000, and we need to break down this apathy, because it's pathetic turnout in our Ward as well as Ward III. It's going to be the 20% again in the next election, which is sad. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Leonard Robinson, 1809 Teasley Drive. Topic's sustainability.
Mayor Pro-Tim, city council members, staff, Leonard Robinson, want to talk about sustainability, which is a strategic growth plan that addresses environmental protection, economic development, and social equity. I would like the city council to start taking that up and inserting that in the strategic vision plan. Why? Because we're growing exponentially. I've only been here a short term since October, and I've seen the growth of the city. I see the quality of the, of the citizens, and I think we need to start moving in that direction. There's approximately 20, 20-plus cities and counties in Georgia that have adopted sustainability. Should we do it because they do it? No, I think we should do it because we're better. I look at one of the companies that recently came into SunTrust Park, ThyssenKrupp. They're going to create 900 jobs. Now, there's several reasons why they moved into Atlanta, but one reason is because Atlanta has a well-fleshed-out sustainability and resilience program. That attracts business. So I'm just, you know, respectfully request that the city council take that up, flesh it out, make it a strategic plan, and put it to, to the very excellent strategic vision. Thank you very much.
Mr. Ryan Campbell, 2004 White Cypress Court.
Hello, how's everybody doing today? Mayor Pro-Tim, city council, it's an honor to be here. Y'all had a very feisty meeting today. That's what y'all are here for. But I just want to start by saying, Smyrna's been my home for a long time. Was represented by Ron Fennell growing up in the Vinings Estates community. I bought my first car here, had my first job here, opened my first business here. So sustainability means a lot to me. And as a young person, a wife in a new community, I want to say, not only are the environmental impacts important, but so are the economic ones. So I recently met with Maryline Blackburn a few times to continue to, you know, further this discussion in terms of sustainability. You know, I've seen the traffic grow, but that's what comes with growth, and you got to take the good with the bad. But it's very important that as a city council, you engage not only with us, but we have to engage with you. It's a team effort. So I would encourage y'all not only to continue to outline a plan for sustainability, but to get involved in your communities. I know there's an expectation that citizens should come to the city council, and that's just, justifiable, but also I, I would challenge every city council member to meet people in their communities, to meet business members, because a lot of the times, we don't see the faces. We only hear the names. And so I applaud y'all for the job you do, but I'm going to continue to challenge y'all to raise the bar and take sustainability as important as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny Barti, 4094 Laurel Springs Way. Sustainability.
Thank you. Great to meet you, city council members. Thank you very much. I've been a resident here since 2003, and I love Smyrna. I was excited to move to the city that had curbside recycling, and I continue to be impressed with the Keep Smyrna Beautiful efforts in recycling especially. I like that the tennis shoes are recycled at our local recycling center, and that they use cooking grease from restaurants as fuel for city vehicles. City parks and recreation areas are well-maintained, and lots of my diverse group of, groups of friends thoroughly enjoy the, the facilities that are here. And now I'd like to push Smyrna to continue to stand out among local cities. I and almost everyone I know wants the city to adopt more renewable energy and embrace the future. Not only do sources of renewable energy make great efforts in reducing our collective carbon footprint, but going solar would result in undeniable economic benefits for our community. Why should our residents pay for energy to line the pockets of industry, of dirty industry, actually, instead of giving back that money to our residents so that they can spend that money supporting the environment, the arts and the culture that Smyrna is filled with? So I ask you to make Smyrna a more sustainable and resilient community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's the last citizen signed up for public comment. There's no other business to be brought before this body. I declare this meeting adjourned at 8:16.